Okay, we'll go ahead and call the hearing to order. Could we have determination of quorum, please?
James Barnes.
Here.
Sarah Shavilochek.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Here.
Larry Chesney.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Philip Haran.
Here.
Michael Lawson.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'd like to welcome, Thomas Bruce is our new member. He's appointed to represent District Four. That's Vaughn Hartung's district. And I'd like to welcome you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shavilochek, could we have you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Shavilochek. The Ethics Law Announcement, please.
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling that is reasonably related to the matter being considered to a person or entity for compensation before another agency within the immediately preceding year, then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I want to point out, for the commission, in addition to the statement that I just read, it came from this year's legislative session, you'll notice that when I usually read this, there are three categories that you're required to disclose and then potentially abstain on. The legislature this year added a fourth category. That fourth one was if you provided representation or counseling that is reasonably related to the matter being considered to a person or entity for compensation before another agency within the immediately preceding year. So if you served, say, as a consultant for a developer on a project, and you appeared with them or helped them get a permit or something in front of some other entity within the previous year, and you got paid to do that, then that's something you would have to disclose. I think you probably all would have just disclosed that anyway, but the legislature went ahead and made it official. And then we would go from the disclosure stage to the discussion that we typically have about possible recusal based on any disclosures. But I wanted to highlight that for you because that is different now. It is broader than it was before.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Webb, could we have the appeal procedure, please?
With pleasure. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant and the proceedings being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100. That's 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee. And for members of the audience this evening who are present or listening, item nine A, which is the abandonment, is an appealable item.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Katie, any general public comment?
There's not.
Okay, thank you. Possible action to approve agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncic and a second by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved unanimously. Thank you. Possible action to approve June 6, 2017 draft minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chesney, a second by Commissioner Doncic. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Item eight A, these are planning items, eight A and eight B. We have master plan amendment case number WMPA-17-0001. And I would ask Mr. Webb to briefly identify the nature of the proceeding.
And if I might, and also for the audience present, item eight A and item eight B were continued from the June 6 Planning Commission meeting. That's why they're first on the agenda. Item eight A is for possible action and discussion to send a report to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners regarding their action to reverse the Planning Commission's original denial regarding a text amendment to Table C3 allowed uses in the Spanish Springs area plan to allow storage of operable vehicles in the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone, subject to the issuance of a Board of Adjustment approved special use permit. The staff representative on this is Kelly Mullen.
Ms. Mullen, would you make your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Kelly Mullen, planner with Washoe County. Tonight, we're revisiting a request that the Planning Commission initially denied back in April. And that was a text amendment to the Spanish Springs area plan. You denied that request, and it was appealed to the Board of County Commissioners where they overturned that denial and, due to a requirement of the code, have sent it back to you for a report. If you recall, the Spanish Springs area plan has its own table of uses, and that is separate from the county's general table of uses found in the Development Code. An excerpt from the Spanish Springs use table is shown on the screen. Currently, the storage of operable vehicles is not an allowed use type in the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone. That's designated on the table by a dashed line, and the applicant is seeking to amend this table to allow for the use type in neighborhood commercial, subject to the issuance of a special use permit. That request would potentially change the dashed line to an S2. And this request affects neighborhood commercial zoning only and only in the Spanish Springs area plan. For reference, there are 148 acres of neighborhood commercial in Spanish Springs. Those are grouped into three main areas along Pyramid Highway. Those are shown in pink on the screen. So this proposal was heard by the Planning Commission April 4th, where you voted unanimously to deny it, citing an inability to make four of the required findings. That action was subsequently appealed by the applicant. That was appealed to the Board of County Commissioners, where they heard that appeal on May 23rd and reversed the Planning Commission's denial, sent the case back to the Planning Commission for a report. And you may recall that when the Board of County Commissioners overturns a Planning Commission denial of a master plan amendment, the Board cannot immediately consider the amendment for adoption. Instead, it must first be sent back to the Planning Commission for a report, which is why we're here tonight. During the Board's discussion of the item, they stressed the importance of the process required to obtain a special use permit as part of any future applications for a storage of operable vehicles use type, and how such requests are subject to a review that evaluates potential impacts and considers whether or not it is appropriate to allow a specific use on a specific piece of property. They also voiced a desire to keep up with the changing nature of the community and pointed out that several allowed uses within neighborhood commercial are potentially more intense than the proposed use type when taking into consideration the requirement for a special use permit. And in the end, the Board indicated that the relevant findings for approval could be made and voted four to one to reverse the Planning Commission's decision. So the Planning Commission is asked to report back to the Board on that action, either by collectively or individually commenting on the Board's action. We will take those comments, put those into a report. That will then be considered by the Board when they evaluate whether or not to adopt the proposed amendment. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Mullen?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Haran.
Ms. Mullen, were there any, did the Board of County Commissioners make any changes to the application that we reviewed and denied?
Thank you for the question. They did not.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mullen?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes.
If I may.
Commissioner Shavilochek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, I mean, we saw the request was to amend the plan. So if this goes through, I mean, irrespective of what we've done, but it would be allowable on every area of pink on this map by special use permit to Board of Adjustment.
It would potentially allow for someone to come in and request a special use permit for that use on their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Mullen? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Mullen. Would the applicant want to say anything, like to say anything? Okay. Do we have any public comment, Katie?
We do. We have Gordon Astrom, followed by Francie Astrom.
Okay, would you please come forward and state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Gordon Astrom. I live at 200 Horizon Ridge, just north of Spanish Springs. The, I was here and watched Ascenti Development make their presentation last month, a very good one, really. But one of the things that struck me was your comment, that you are required to go by that pile of white binders over there in your decision-making. So I'll base mine objections to this based upon that. First, the master plan calls for personal storage must be in a facility defined by personal storage guidelines. No problem, we got that one. Master plan for operable vehicles must be in the same facility. This is a brick-and-mortar definition of how high the walls, what kind of trees to plant, offsets, things like this. Now, Table C3, now, Spanish Springs has a special one, states that the personal storage can be in neighborhood commercial office or in industrial also. But the operable vehicles can only be in industrial. So that in your table up there, you're allowed to put the personal storage in two places, but operable vehicles can only go in one. Now, this means that the industrial storage for that, which is defined by C3, is going to have to be in an area that is industrial. And only personal storage can be put in. If you look at your guides, you'll find that the verbiage calls for an 18-foot-tall RV awning. That can go into an industrial area. If you want to put it in a neighborhood commercial, I guess you could, but you can't put an RV under it. So basically, what I'm saying is, I went the wrong way, there we go. In some instances, allowable uses within certain land designations in Spanish Springs vary from what is allowed in the normal code. We've done that because we want our neighborhood to be a certain way. We don't want to be an inclined village. We don't want to be a Reno. We don't want to be a Spark. We want to be Spanish Springs. So we've defined it. And specifically, it says, "All other uses are prohibited." So that's what we want you to stick to, is follow your books over there like you're supposed to. And I'm a happy camper, or a happy citizen, as the case may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you come forward and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Francie Astrom. I live at 200 Horizon Ridge in Sparks. I am here to speak against this change in our land zoning, as pointed out by your Commissioner, Sarah. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. I had a hard last name, too, previously. But when we're thinking about making this change, I think you must understand that they are not going to impact only this one intersection on Pyramid Road, Pyramid Highway. They're going to impact three different sections. Those sections are currently, one of them is in front of the subdivision in which we live, and the other two are also in subdivisions where there are a lot of people. We recommend that you not change this current zoning, and that if the individuals who would like to make this area into an operable vehicle storage facility, then I would recommend they come back to you and ask that that one space, that one area, be rezoned for their use. And then it's up to you and the county commissioners to decide upon that. But to change three separate areas to make them allowable for this type of storage is, in my mind, very inappropriate. I think we should really look very severely at the impact that it might have on where people currently live. And additionally, I agree with my husband that Spanish Springs is an area that we are trying very hard to develop into a strong neighborhood, and by putting an operable vehicle storage facility at a very important intersection in our community is, in my mind, inappropriate. I thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Katie, is there any other public comment?
There is.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Max Peterson. My address is 7919 Creation Court. I just wanted to give my opinion that I think changing the, making this change to the Sparks master plan is kind of going in the wrong direction for that, at least that particular area. And I have concerns as stated that it kind of opens the door for a lot of these types of changes, in at least these types of changes in three other locations. I just don't see that particular intersection as the right place for this type of storage. That's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Katie, any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Okay, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions? Mr. Chesney? Well, at this point, let's do questions, okay? Mr. Haran? Okay, anyone have questions? Okay. Then let's bring it back to commissioners for comments and discussion. Mr. Chesney, did you have some?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Regardless of what the county commissioners overruled our decision, the reason that I, in particular, voted against this thing in the first place was that Spanish Springs is a future growth hub for the county, one of probably four or five major growth hubs. When it comes to revising the master plan for one applicant, I find that very irresponsible. It would be irresponsible on our part, and I feel it's irresponsible on the county commissioners to blanket the uses in neighborhood commercial, so somebody can put in a personal, or a personal storage and car wash deal. Based on the public comment, the public, the people, the people lived in the neighborhood, lived, that are affected by these changes, they wanted no part of it. We had good public comment. These broad-brush master plan amendments shouldn't be proposed in growth hubs until there's an actual master plan update. I think that this piecemeal, these piecemeal changes without a master plan or an area plan update where the entire community has an opportunity to participate are wrong. There currently exists in the Spanish Springs area plenty of industrial spaces owned for these uses currently, and that's where, I believe that that's where they should stay. Because Spanish Springs is in a growth phase right now, as we know, we've approved probably 1,200, 1,400 units in the last six or eight months to be built, in addition to what's already been approved, Spanish Springs is lacking in the types of businesses that really belong in neighborhood commercial, dentists, doctors, so on and so forth, those sorts of businesses. So I cannot in any way support what the county commissioners, their reversal on this, and I think it's a disservice to the community.
Okay, thank you. How do the commissioners want to proceed on this? Do you want to make individual comments, or do you want to make collective comments? Or what's the feeling of the commission? Because you could go either way. We could have everybody make individual, yes, Mr. Haran?
I think, I think that it's
We got to fix these lines. I think it's important for the commissioners individually to state how they feel. I think that it's a collective decision at that, at some point in time, but I think that it's important that individuals have an opportunity to express their views.
Okay, all right. Does everyone feel that way then, or, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Lawson.
I agree completely with both of my colleagues here. I think that collectively, we can, we can make comments via the meaning of this discussion. I was not a member of the commission when this matter first became before you. I have, however, reviewed it extensively before last, last month's meeting because it was on our packet. I have listened to the testimony from the fans and, fans, from the audience. We can strike that part of the comments. But I just want to say that I completely support the decision that this commission made the first time around. If I had been on the commission, I would have voted the same. I agree completely that this was, I do not support the Board of Commissioners overturning of this, and I completely support my colleagues.
Okay, Mr. Haran?
I think, to be brief, I agree with both of my colleagues and their statements. I respect the county commissioners' authority to do these types of things. That's why we have checks and balances. And, you know, I have no problem with that. They can always view things differently. I think, however, that we, as a commission, did a very thorough review of this when it was presented to us in April, and I support the decision that we made at that time. And seeing as there have been, and there has been no change by the commissioners in the presentation itself.
Right. Mr. Chesney, did you want to say anything else?
I think I said enough.
Okay. Okay. I'll just say that I agree with what the three commissioners so far have said. I think our decision was right at the time. I see no reason to change it, and I do respect the county commission, but I still think our decision was correct. So Commissioner Shavilochek, would you like?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just, again, support my esteemed colleagues in our original decision for denial. I will point out that the Spanish Springs area plan has a special text. And we address this special text for personal storage and storage of operable vehicles in the spirit in which the Spanish Springs area plan is written. And when the applicant in their appeal were saying that the, you know, it was to correct the language or to amend the original intent, the way Table C3 is written is the original intent of the community, and I will stand by that. I do respect our Board of County Commission for their determination to reverse us, but I would also point out that the Spanish area plan, Spanish Springs area plan, was written by the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Doncic?
Well, I just have to say that I totally agree with all of my esteemed commissioners, that we did due diligence. When it first came through, we went through everything, and I stand by my original comment that that not being allowed was not an oversight. It was the community's wish, because the communities were all involved in writing their master plans and their area plans. And I feel that this is exactly what the Spanish Springs community wanted to, as part of their plan, and it wasn't an error. And if it was an error, why would it wait so long for somebody to bring it up as an error? It was, it was not an oversight. That was the determination of the community at the time that it was written, that that was not going to be appropriate in their area, and that, as Sarah says, they have special texts that are governing their areas. And I, I understand where the commissioners are coming from, but I have, I stand with what we voted for, for not to turn it.
Thank you, Commissioner Doncic. Commissioner Bruce, would you like to comment?
Yes, I would. I am very new, and I have only had the material to review for a little over a week. I've tried very hard to get my arms around the material. And quite frankly, I am in agreement with what has been said before. I have found nothing in the information that I have been able to go over that says that there was, that the decision wasn't the right decision to begin with by the Planning Commission. And so I agree with it, and I had more time and been here earlier, I probably would have voted that way before.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bruce. All right, well, I think we've gotten the individual comments. Does someone want to make a motion at this point? Because I believe there's a, you can make a motion either to do it collectively or by individual comments.
And there is a motion included in the staff report.
It's a very simple motion here.
Right, yeah. Just to make clear that the public does understand that our decision has been denied, and this will go through. So we're, I would say we're probably in agreement with the public, but we've been overruled by the county commission. So just wanted to make that clear. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Lawson.
I move that after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission provide a report to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners regarding master plan amendment case number WMPA-17-001, containing the comments provided by this group as delineated in the minutes from this conversation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lawson and a second by Commissioner Chesney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, then I would call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, let's
I have a question. What happens now?
Well, I think we can't really respond to that. You can meet with Mr. Webb after the meeting, and I think he can explain it to you, but at this point, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to comment. Okay, item eight B, I'd like to ask Mr. Webb to briefly identify the nature of this and make a presentation on it, please.
Gladly. Item eight B for possible action and discussion to direct staff to draft amendments to the Planning Commission's rules, policies, procedures to remove the public comment, time limit rule of five minutes. Every speaker representing a group and other matters is appropriate. There is no staff report for this item, and this is obviously another one of the items that was continued from June 6. The genesis of this item really had to deal with the Planning Commission meeting preceding that, which was in May, where we had many different competing people who were claiming to be representatives of a group, causing the acting chair consternation in trying to discern who might actually be a representative of the group, thereby allocating them the five-minute times. The rules, policies, and procedures are fairly clear that there is the ability to provide five minutes to a group, but also that only one individual is awarded that opportunity or that time limit. Because of that, rules, policies, and procedures, that same time limitation appears on the first page of the Planning Commission's agendas. Staff's recommendation is that we bring back to this commission proposed amendments for you to consider and hopefully adopt that would remove that five-minute time limit, bring it in line with the Board of County Commissioners, who, by the way, only allow three minutes to every speaker, regardless of who they're representing or who they're not. So what the action would be, excuse me, would be to direct staff to draft those amendments and bring them back to you at your next meeting, which would be in August.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Katie, do we have any public comment on this item?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, Mr. Chesney?
So if, if we remove the three minutes for a speaker for, or the five minutes for a speaker per group, that allows them to, what, request any amount of time that they want, or?
In response to Commissioner Chesney, the draft amendments would simply remove the one provision that says allowing five minutes. So it would still read 50 So it would still read fifteen minutes for a staff presentation, fifteen minutes for an applicant's presentation, and three minutes for everybody thereafter. So, and the Chair always has the ability, by the way, regardless of the three-minute or five-minute or fifteen-minute rule, to moderate those time limits based on the Chair's discretion and the meeting. So that would remain the same in the rules and procedures. The only thing that would be removed is the reference to five minutes.
Do we need a motion on this? Well, yeah, but let's see. I think, Commissioner Bruce, did you have a question?
I know, I, well, not really. I was, having spoken before and used the five minutes, I would say that you would have the option to do that. I would like to see that for someone that was agreed upon. But if there is any disagreement, you only get three minutes. In other words, if there is somebody here who is representing a group and has a group statement and is the spokesperson, you might want to consider that. I don't know. I haven't been here that much. And like I said, I did represent a property owners association on a number of appearances before the Washoe County Commissioners and, and some in terms of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bruce. Any other question? Yes, Commissioner Haran?
I really support going back to being consistent with, with the county and leave it up to our esteemed leader to vary that as required.
That sounds good. Yes.
That's the same comment I was going to make, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay. Then at this point, I guess we should have a motion. Do we want to make directions to staff by means of a motion? Commissioner Haran?
Well, since, since this is freewheeling. I move that we delegate to the Chair to work with staff to modify the time limits allowed for public comment.
And if I might add, and we actually have to amend the rules, policies, and procedures to bring those back to you at your August meeting for your consideration and possible adoption.
As stated by Mr. Webb.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, the agenda is for you to remove the five-minute time limit for a speaker representing a group. So I just ask the movement if that's what the scope of the motion is.
That would be my intention.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Haran. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, then 8C. I would ask Bob Webb, or Mr. Webb, to briefly describe the nature of this proceeding.
With pleasure. Presentation and possible discussion of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association's 2017 Nevada Planning Guide. Mr. Frederick Steinman, who's the NBAPA Chapter Secretary is here. I don't see Julie, so it's all the Mr. Frederick show today.
Okay. Mr. Steinman, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Bob, for the record, Fred Steinman, Assistant Research Professor with the University Center for Economic Development at the University of Nevada Reno, as well as Chapter Secretary for the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. It's my pleasure to present to each one of you a copy of the February 2017 Nevada Planning Guide as recently published jointly by both the University Center for Economic Development and the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. As part of the mission of both the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association and the University Center for Economic Development, and specifically the Nevada Leadership Program, which is part of the University Center for Economic Development, our primary mission is to really reach out to elected and appointed officials, government executives, staff, and interested members of the public and assist in the development and education and understanding of planning issues relevant to local communities throughout the state and the state of Nevada as a whole. As part of that mission, we worked over the last two or so years, about eight individual writers, myself included, to revise the existing planning guide for the chapter that was initially published in 1994. Given a lot has changed since 1994, it felt right at this point to update the planning guide and then distribute free copies of the planning guide to all Planning Commissions, city councils, and county commissions throughout the state of Nevada. And again, it is my pleasure to present each one of you with your very own printed and bound copied of that planning guide recently published by both the chapter and the University Center for Economic Development. The chapter itself is provided at no cost by both the chapter and the University Center for Economic Development in electronic format, published on both the chapter's website and the website of the Nevada Leadership Program maintained by the College of Business at the University of Nevada Reno. And we hope, both from the chapter's perspective and the perspective of the University Center for Economic Development, that the material provided in the seven individual chapters that comprise the guide, that we can help in facilitating and improving the general understanding of planning issues throughout the state. In addition to your very own printed and bound copy of the planning guide, I've also included some additional materials. One is just my card. If you have questions about the chapter or what we do at the University Center for Economic Development, you're welcome to contact me directly using the contact information provided on the card provided to you. I've also provided some information about the University Center for Economic Development, links to the Nevada Leadership Program, again, part of the University Center for Economic Development, information about the chapter's upcoming annual conference, which will be held October 1 through 4 in Carson City, and also some information about the chapter-only membership afforded to anyone interested in joining the chapter for the chapter-only rate. And then finally, some information about an upcoming 2017 Global Climate Change Summit that the University Center for Economic Development in partnership with the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association will be holding. Again, thank you to staff and each one of you for this opportunity of presenting you the February 2017 Nevada Planning Guide as published by the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Steinman? Yes, Mr. Haran?
Just out of curiosity, what is your relationship with EDON?
Thank you, Commissioner. As faculty, specifically with the University Center for Economic Development, I work very closely with staff from the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada on various economic impact studies, economic assessments. That is work that we do at the center, not only with EDON, but also groups like Northern Nevada Development Authority, Western Nevada Development District, and other economic development groups throughout the state. The chapter specifically, the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, does not necessarily have a direct relationship with EDON or any specific economic development group in the state. However, many of our chapter members are, you know, staff or employees or board members of groups like EDON and others throughout the state.
Follow-up. Does that mean then that you are not working hand-in-glove with? I'm not saying good or bad. I mean, just saying that, do you work on joint projects together or...
We have in the past. There's no, you know, direct formal relationship where there's recurring work. But if there's opportunities for either the chapter or the University Center for Economic Development to work with EDON, we have in the past. Most recently, the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada supported in both 2015 and 2016, the Nevada Economic Development Conference, which the University of Nevada Reno hosted jointly with the Western Nevada Development District and the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association.
The only reason I ask is because it's, you know, the Nevada's in a, in a, really a good place right now as far as bringing people in. It's, it's, I think it's critical to all these economic development pieces. Work together to try and make it continue to happen. That's my only point.
Very much so.
Any other questions for Mr. Steinman?
I'd like to, thank you.
Yes, yeah, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then Katie, is there any public comment on this?
There's not.
Okay, thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions, discussion, or comments they'd like to make on this?
Well, the only comment I would make, I think it's really interesting that we have all of these resources and, and, you know, and be hopeful that they're all pulling on the same rope when we're, we're trying to get people to do that. There's a tendency sometimes to have, have ownership of certain areas that kind of works against cooperation sometimes. And I hope that they, all of these that were mentioned today continue to work to, to make us better.
Any other comment? Yes, Commissioner Doncic?
I just think that I've read the original version and now this one now. And I just think it's a wonderful job done and it gives a lot of explanation. And I want to see it more out into the public so they can understand the processes that guide us or what we, how we get to the points that we are. And again, going forward, any Planning Commission changes, I think this should be part of the Planning Commissioners' handbooks that are given to them because it gives a good, basic understanding of where, how we get to the point that we are when we're doing our jobs.
Thank you, Commissioner Doncic. Any other discussion or comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'll just go ahead and close the hearing. I don't think there's any action to be taken at this time. So thank everyone very much. We'll go to Item 9A. This is abandonment case number WAB 17-0003, Lurie Lane. And I'd ask Mr. Webb to briefly identify the nature of the proceeding.
For possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve the abandonment of an unused 20-foot emergency access easement that traverses three parcels that are subject to this request. The easement proposed for abandonment stems from Lurie Lane and only provides access to the three subject parcels and no other surrounding or connected parcels have an interest in the easement. Chad Geisinger is the staff planner for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Okay, disclosures by Commissioners either as to ethics or ex parte communications? Okay, I've seen none. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'd ask Chad if you would go ahead and give us our staff presentation, please?
Most certainly. Good evening, Commissioner Barnes, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Chad Geisinger, Senior Planner with Washoe County Community Services Department, Planning and Building Division as of Monday. This is abandonment case number WAB 17-0003, also known as Lurie Lane. And pictured before you there is, is Lurie Lane and the three subject parcels. Project is located at 20 Lurie Lane. It consists of three APNs. There's only one address at present because only the middle of the three parcels is currently developed with a single-family house. It's located approximately a third mile west of Lakeside Drive as pictured in the vicinity map. All three parcels are, have a regulatory zone of high-density rural. And all three parcels are exactly two and a half acres in size, totaling seven and a half acres total. All three parcels are currently owned by the same individual or the same trust at the moment anyways. And the easement that is proposed for abandonment is an emergency access easement only and it is only present on those three subject parcels as I will be showing in subsequent slides. Here is the site plan from the applicant's application. You can see, highlighted there in pink is the abandonment, or the requested easement for abandonment. As you can see, it cuts across the first parcel there, almost cutting it in half, sweeps underneath where the existing house is, and then terminates in the pasture at the third parcel with a, a bulb out there. The easement above that, that is pointed out, is also a 20-foot access easement. And that is actually the easement that has been improved and paved. I would like to draw your attention to the terminus of that easement. You can see there that there is no turnaround depicted as far as an easement goes. And I will touch on that a little bit more in subsequent slides. Also, draw your attention to the fact that there are also numerous other easements that exist on these three parcels that, that accommodate utility and drainage easements. There is a ditch easement. None of those easements would be impacted by the requested abandonment. So here's an aerial overview of the subject site. You can see the house in the middle parcel there. The easement to be abandoned begins approximately where that driveway is on, on the parcel to the north. It traverses across about the middle portion of that first parcel underneath the house and then terminates, terminates approximately at the bottom of the, the sloped area of that third parcel. Here's a better close-up view of the first parcel. The access easement stems off of Lurie Lane roughly from where the neighbor's driveway is there. You can see the house in the foreground. And here's a close-up of the remainder parcels. That's approximate location of the terminus of the existing easement to be abandoned. You'll notice in the photo that there is actually an improved turnaround on the third parcel already. And that is to remain and provide access to that third parcel should the emergency access easement be abandoned. You can also note the, the rockout cropping and, you know, sloped area right there on that third parcel. NRSA authorizes the Planning Commission to vacate easements if the public will not be materially injured. In this instance, staff feels that the public would not be materially injured by abandonment of the easement. There are no adjacent properties that would negatively be affected because they do not have, gain access off of this easement. Surrounding properties have their own alternative developed access. And the applicant is requesting abandonment of this easement because it has never been used. It hasn't been improved. And it's, it's creating an encumbrance, especially on that first parcel where that it cuts in half. And all three of those parcels also have access in addition to the emergency access to be abandoned. Here's a list of reviewing agencies that received a copy of the application. For banning and easement, your, the code requires that the utilities be provided notice in case there's an interest that they would have. In this case, there are no utility easements within that emergency access easement. But nevertheless, they were provided a copy. Only two of those agencies provided substantive comments. Engineering is requiring the applicant to submit acceptable legal descriptions and of course, you know, prepare the order of abandonment. And then the fire department, Truckee Meadows Fire Department initially requested a 50-foot radius turnaround be added to the existing easement that has been improved. Because as, as I noted, you saw there was, there wasn't one denoted or actually identified as an easement. That condition went out as Condition 3A to the staff report. The applicant objected to the 50-foot radius language and had, and was in negotiations with the fire department to change the wording to diameter. So that's why I have underlined the word diameter because Amy Ray did ultimately agree to change that and only require a 50-foot diameter bulb out there. And so if, should you approve this tonight, I have included in the motion, you know, amending the language in that, in that condition. So just to be clear, here's the original wording that was provided by the fire department in red there, radius. And then in the one on the bottom, what's changed, I have denoted in red. They simply changed it to diameter as originally designed. And then I just have a little photo there. The, the idea there is to take the one that's being abandoned and simply move it up to the one that's to remain when they record the order of abandonment. Public notice was provided as code requires. There were a total of 10 adjacent abutting property owners. Legal notice was provided in the Reno Gazette-Journal. No, no public comments were received by staff. And abandonments are not reviewed by the citizen advisory boards, but the Cabs are provided a copy of the application and staff did not receive any comments from Cab members. Here are the findings that the Planning Commission is required to make in order to approve an abandonment. Consistency with the master plan and area plan. No detriment, material injury to public. And that existing easements are adequate or the easements to remain will be adequate. Staff is able to make all three of those required findings as detailed in the staff report on page 7. Staff is recommending approval to include an amendment to Condition 3A, changing the word radius to diameter. And a motion is provided for your reference. And with that, conclude my presentation and open it up to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Any questions for Chad?
It's my question, Ray.
Yes, Commissioner Haran?
Just, this probably has nothing to do with this application, but I noticed on the three, three existing properties that they developed the improved improvement on the middle property would appear to infringe upon setbacks that might be required. Is that, would, would that be a, if that parcel was ever sold, would that be a grandfather-type of condition?
Yes, I did bring that up with the applicant's representative and pointed that out. Essentially, that structure as it current, currently sits is within the setback for that parcel on the side yard. You'll see the red line passing right over the edge of the house. It would be considered an existing non-conforming, illegal, non-conforming use because it was properly permitted. And at some point, the line was moved and it wasn't caught. I'm not sure the genesis of why it ended up this way. The parcels are under the same ownership, so it hasn't been an issue for them. But if they did go to sell that, that would definitely be an encumbrance that they would have to deal with and would probably, would, should come up in a title report in any event. And obviously, they could run a boundary line adjustment. The minimum lot size for HDR is two acres, so they have a little bit of leeway to work with there. They could make that contingent upon the sale. I decided not to address it as part of this application, but I did, I did... I decided not to address it as part of this application, but I did, I did recognize that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chad? Okay, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Mr. Krimpotic, would you like to make an applicant presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners John Krimpotic. I'm here on behalf of the Lurie family, who owns the three properties and is the applicant. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I thought Chad did a very thorough job, both in his testimony and his presentation, and also in a very thorough staff report. I would note that we are in complete agreement with the staff report and the conditions as written. The basis of this is that, you know, you had something that was created 40 years ago. We had very loose kind of mapping information at that time. It's kind of interesting to see the, as one of the commissioners pointed out, the way the property line clips the existing residence, and then we have this easement issue as well. What's really going on with the easement issues, I think we've all come to a common understanding that it is not functional in its current state. It serves no purpose, it's never been improved, it's just been there as a recorded emergency access easement since the beginning of time, which was back in 1976. And then more importantly today, it does impose a legal encumbrance on the property, and there's interest in selling the property, one of the parcels, and so this has to be worked out. And then also, it does cut the properties in half that are not developed today, so it is really kind of baggage for that collection of three properties as they sit today. I have my own analysis of the findings. I think it's important to go through those because it's clear that all three findings can and will be met, hopefully, by the commission, and that is consistency with the actions, policies, and standards of the master plan and/or the Southwest Truckee Meadows Area Plan. There is no material injury to the public. I think that's really important and fundamental in NRS provision in dealing with abandonments, and it actually improves the public good because you're moving it, essentially moving it, re-establishing a new easement to an existing paved way that would then serve some functional purpose. And the other is, the third finding is existing easements can be reasonably relocated, there's just no issue there at all. In terms of Chad's comments, I think toward the end, it was about the 100 versus 50. That was nothing more than an honest typo. People used conditions, and if you consistently reference 100-foot diameter, 50-foot radius, in this case, we meant diameter from day one. I pointed it out to the fire marshal, she was in complete agreement, because we were simply using the same geometry and moving it up to the current driveway as it sits. So that wasn't a negotiation, just so there is a difference between the typo versus negotiating that. So that's, that's how that evolved. So could you pull up my, I'm going to just show two slides on the PowerPoint. Where's the? Here we go. So there's the existing, right, the map from 1976 with the, the basic alignment of the driveway above it, and there's the new bulb with the new easement superimposed on that. So the idea would be, you know, that serves access and fire access to all properties, to the fire department standards, and of course, would be also the access for development of the third parcel. There, we kind of tried to superimpose the actual map into the aerial image, and you can see kind of how weird it is it sits. It appears to clip the middle house as well, so. The information that was used, the best information we had at the time, I suppose. So that's all I have, Commissioners, thank you very much, and I'd be here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krimpotic.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Krimpotic? Okay, seen none. Katie, do we have any public comment?
There's none.
Okay, then bring it back to the commissioners. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff, applicant, or members of the public? Okay, seen none, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Call for discussion, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Haran?
Based on Chad's presentation, as well as the applicant, I can, I certainly don't see any issues with moving this forward, and I certainly will support it based on the facts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seen none, then I call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that after giving reason, consideration, and the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with the conditions included as Exhibit A in the staff report, abandonment case number WAB 17-003 for Jason Lurie, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 11080620. And that includes the changing in the wording from radius to diameter.
And if I might, that was specific to Condition 3A?
That would be part of Condition 3A, correct.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Haran, and a second by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion on the motion?
None that has not already been made.
Okay, then seeing none, I'd go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We have, next is planning items. This is item 10A. And I'd ask Mr. Webb to briefly identify the nature of this proceeding.
For possible action and discussion to review and determine and/or confirm the order of alternates selected to represent the Washoe County Planning Commission on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission in the event, and the regularly appointed PC members are unable to serve. There, I'll just cover the staff report briefly. You do have the staff report in front of you. As the planning commissioners are probably full aware to include our two newest members, three members of this planning commission are served as, appointed to serve by the Board of County Commissioners as the Washoe County Representatives on the Regional Planning Commission. Those three planning commission members are Jim Barnes, whose term extends through June of 2018, Larry Chesney, whose term extends through June of 2019, and Sarah Chevillacek, whose term extends through June of 2020. She was just recently reappointed to that position on the planning commission, Regional Planning Commission. The rules, policies, and procedures of this planning commission allow for the appointment by this commission of alternates who are there to serve if indeed one of the regular Regional Planning Commission members cannot attend a meeting. How that mechanics work is that if a RPC member cannot attend, they notify staff. Staff then starts the list at the first alternate, works our way through the second, third, and fourth as need be, until we can come up with an alternate who is able to attend and the meeting as a Washoe County Representative. Because it's very important that Washoe County has the full slate of three members at all RPC meetings to fully represent the county during those regional discussions. In the staff report, we chat a little bit about the common practice of this planning commission has been to move alternates up as new members are appointed to the RPC, and they're going to take the newest members and move them at the bottom of the list so their turn to move up will happen. If the planning commission so desires to follow that common practice, it's been, staff's recommendation that the first alternate would be Philip Haran, the second alternate would be Francine Doncic, the third alternate would be Michael Lawson, and the fourth alternate would be Thomas Bruce. And again, this is for action by the planning commission to either confirm that order or to suggest and provide your own order for the alternates to the Regional Planning Commission. Once that actually happens, then part of what the motion is, if I can explain it real quick, is that you then would confirm or designate the alternates and move to direct the planning commission secretary, myself, to transmit that confirmed list of names not only to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, but also to the executive director of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. So that concludes my review of the staff report. Subject to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Webb? Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right, Katie, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any questions for anyone? Okay, then I'll bring it back and ask for a decision of the commissioners. Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to confirm the order of alternates to the Regional Planning Commission as follows. Do I need to read the names, Bob, or can we? Okay.
If you could read the names, please.
Huh?
Please read the names.
Okay. Let's see. The currently proposed order is as follows. First alternate would be Philip Haran, second alternate would be Francine Doncic, third alternate would be Michael Lawson, fourth alternate would be Thomas Bruce. If, I further move to direct the planning commission secretary to transmit the confirmed list of alternates to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and to the executive director of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chesney, a second by Commissioner Haran. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I think that we should yield to the wise and thoughtful process that previous boards have established for this and continue with it.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seen none, then I'd call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, item 11, chair and commission items, and A is for possible action and discussion to elect officers, chair and vice chair. I have served two consecutive terms, and under the rules, procedures, and policies, I'm limited to two terms. So at this time, I'll be going off as chairman, but I'd like to ask if there, if someone would like to, and I want to say too, that I really appreciate the support of the commission. I think this is the best commission I've seen in, in a long time, and I've been involved with this for about 25 years, so I say it's a really good commission. But I'd like to ask if there's anyone who would like to make a recommendation for the chair for the next year?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I would like to nominate Sarah Chevillacek for position of chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chesney? We have a second on that?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chesney and a second by Commissioner Doncic. Does anyone want to nominate anyone else? Are there any other nominations? All right, then we'll close the nominations, and I'd ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, and with that, I'll turn the gavel over to Commissioner Chevillacek, and you can do the rest of the meeting.
Boy, that's an amazingly quick transfer of power. We could take, nations could take.
Very peaceful, too.
Yes, very peaceful, trying to just pass that gavel over. So we are now at nominations for vice chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Chesney as vice chair, and he, to continue to receive his wisdom throughout our next term.
I second.
We have, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. All those in favor of Commissioner Chesney serving as vice chair?
Aye.
Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we just confirm with the clerk that there's no public comment? I'm looking in the audience, and there's no one here. I just, on the record, it won't show.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to make that confirmation.
Confirm that there is no public comment.
There is no public comment.
Item B, future agenda items for possible discussion. If I may, Mr. Webb, I was not able to attend the Board of County Commission meeting with the discussion about the citizens advisory boards. Is it possible for this commission to get a report on that outcome?
To the new chair, I will make that request of the manager's office. I listened halfway. I had another item afterwards, and I was only listening halfway. So I'll make a request if the manager's office can provide me a report, and I'll then be able to transmit to the commission.
Thank you, because I think it's just, you know, this, this board has, this commission has repeatedly said how important the public comment from the CABs is, so I would just like to have a report on that. Any other requests for future agenda items?
I have a question on that. It was kind of interesting in the presentation about the economic development, people from Nevada. Do, and this is directed to Mr. Webb, does the planning, or this, your department have any coordination with economic development and the requirements of what the regulations, rules, and for development in different areas? Do you have any coordination with that at all?
Through the new chair, to Commissioner Haran. Yes, in a tangential way. We have a business facilitator that, as a position that is currently vacant, was occupied by our new planning and building division director. However, we are recruiting for that new position, and the business facilitator position is keyed up with that to serve really as a lead for economic development questions and initiatives specific to the planning and building arena. So it's really focused in on that community services department perspective, working with the manager's office, who really is the main point of contact on economic development, and then using those as conduits to talk about pre-development meetings. That's, for instance, where that came from. Opportunities to explain to new businesses how we operate in unincorporated Washoe County, what our rules are for business licensing, for planning, for building, for public works/ engineering projects.
I think that's great. I think it's very important because, you know, I think that sometimes we get applications that people have different ideas about what really is possible and what needs to be done. So I think that position needs to be, you know, continue to be filled and active with the, with the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Certainly.
Under future agenda items, and I'd like to preface it with a question to council. And Nate, I have concerns about having to make decisions after hours of presentation in a short period of time, and I recognize that that stems from NRS, and that the changes to NRS would be required before this group could kick something down their own. But I'd like to have a discussion about that, the, what would, what would we need to do in an open forum to have a conversation about potential changes to our process to allow us to defer decision to a future meeting beyond the, beyond the way it works now? So I guess my first question is, do we need to discuss that on a future agenda item? Or can I work independently with my congressional representatives to effect change to NRS?
Yeah, it's a good question. You can work independently on that. And in fact, because, you know, any change like that from the county standpoint would need to sort of emanate from the county commission anyway, I think working independently, as you just put it, is probably a good way to go.
Thank you, Nate. And as, having heard that, I have no agenda item.
Anything else on item 11B? Okay, 11C, request for information from staff.
I have just a comment. Our last meeting, we had a pretty raucous and unruly crowd, and I think that we had a, an idea before the meeting even occurred that there was going to be quite the turnout. And I would appreciate it in the future if we have any idea that, that we're going to have that kind of a turnout, not knowing what the temperament of the crowd's going to be, that we do have a sheriff's deputy here.
To the chair, to the commissioner, staff actually evaluates that closely to make sure that any request we make for a sheriff's deputy, we really base it on the temperament of the crowd. In that particular case, the planners have been out with that group of individuals on three separate other occasions. The first meeting was contentious, however, the other meetings, and particularly the meeting preceding this one in a neighborhood meeting, which had probably twice as many people as you saw in your chambers, did not cause any alarm bells to go off, and so we had seriously considered that. And we do, as staff, are particularly aware, if there's any potential disruption or concern, we'll request the sheriff's office presence in the commission. So we, we think about that the same as you do.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
And if I might add to that, and it, not necessarily for protection in the chambers, but when we leave this building and we left at such a late hour, there were no lights on outside. I mean, to get to our cars is challenging, so.
So I think that's, we're on request for information from staff, Madam Chair, and I think that's a request for information from Mr. Webb about what could possibly be looked into about that.
Thank you. Anything else for our request for information from staff? Item 12, directors and legal counsel items. Item A, report on previous planning commission items?
Just one item. Tenant map.
Just one item, tentative map 16-009 and special use permit SW 16-003, assante. Remember, this planning commission approved the tentative and the special use permit. That action has been appealed to the Board of County Commissioners and will be heard at the Board at their August 8th meeting. So that's the August 8th meeting. And that's all I have. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had heard that there's another item that was in the process of being appealed, the Lake Tahoe school thing. Is that going to be heard?
The Lake Tahoe school is on the July 11th Board of County Commissioners meeting, and yes, well, let me back up a little bit. It was at the June 23rd, I believe that was the date, meeting. There was a continuance at the request of the appellant and of the applicant, and it was continued to the July 11th meeting. My understanding is that the two parties are working to come to a mutual understanding that would then negate the need for the appeal, but if that action does not happen, the Board will take action on the appeal at July 11th.
Thank you. Any other requests for planning commission items? Okay. 12B, legal information and updates.
I have nothing else to add right now.
Thank you. We're item 13, general public comment. Do we have any requests to speak?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.